Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for your many and abundant blessings, including this beautiful day. Thank you for the ability to meet this evening, for the freedoms and liberty that we so enjoy. Please give us your strength, wisdom, and guidance this evening in our discussions. It is in your most blessed hands.
... of the United States of America. The public which stands one nation under God, the end of it.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to let you know that on the planning update at your next meeting on May 17th, we do have confirmed the two Safford Auto cases, the Anderson propane case, as well as the two zoning amendments that I had listed as tentative. They will be on that meeting, and we have invited zoning to come and represent so that they can answer questions that came up at the last meeting when that was reviewed. So I think we'll be well-prepared for those two code amendments. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I trust everybody's had a chance to review the minutes of April 5th, 2017. If there are no questions or comments on that, I'll take a motion to approve.
No move.
Call the vote, please. Motion passes. Any unfinished business? Very well, we'll move along to the public hearing. Rezoning R-17-02.
Lorcan Peter, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request to rezone .48 acres from Residential 2 to Commercial 1 with proffers to allow for a contractor's office and shop. Staff is recommending approval with the proffered conditions dated April 5th, 2017. Here is an aerial image of the subject property outlined in red. You may recognize this property. It's the old forestry building next to the Marshall Center, across Courthouse Road from Spottylvania Middle School. The Virginia Department of Forestry occupied this property as an outpost, as a permitted use, from 1989 through September of 2015. The Brannams have purchased the property and wish to operate their business at this location. They are Brannam Mechanical LLC, which is a commercial HVAC contractor operation. The property is designated on the future land use map within the comp plan as institutional, but it is surrounded by mixed-use designations. The institutional designation was clearly a reflection of its former use with the Department of Forestry. Therefore, staff determined that it was most appropriate to analyze this as part of a mixed-use district. The mixed-use land use particularly incorporates a variety of uses from residential to commercial to light industrial. The Brannam Mechanical operation fits well within that, and it's compatible with the existing land use. It's already surrounded by county facilities, as well as attached and detached housing and other commercial operations. So while it is consistent with the mixed-use land use designation, the mixed-use does have some design elements that this particular proposal might fall short of, but all in all, it's consistent with the mixed-use goals. Currently, the .48 acre site includes a 2,300-square-foot building, a gravel parking area, and three points of access. There's two along American Legion, and there's one here, it's not shown here, and then one on Courthouse Road. The contractor office use is expected to generate 11 vehicle trips per day. This is a commercial HVAC business, so the applicant explained that customers do not visit this property. They have five employees, and most workdays, their employees are dispatched directly from their home to the job site. So there's no expectation this is going to be a high-traffic user. As part of this proposal, the applicant has agreed to close the access on American Legion closest to Courthouse Road. That's why it's not shown here. And they'll also upgrade the existing access on the Courthouse Road to meet VDOT's low-volume commercial entrance standards. Both of these improvements address both county access management policies and VDOT standards with respect to design and entrance spacing requirements. With previous rezoning cases, which include completely developed sites such as this, staff has consistently made recommendation that these sites be brought up to current standards. With this site, staff recommended that a landscape street buffer be provided along the frontage, and the applicant has proffered to do so, and I'll go into more detail into the proffer discussion with that. The other comment was, or the other recommendation was, that the gravel parking lot be paved. The county code has a dustless surface requirement. The parking lots currently gravel, and the applicant has presented a proffer to pave it, but at a later time, and I'll go through those details under the proffer discussion The applicant submitted a number of proffers, the first being generalized development plan conformance. They provided the GDP that we just reviewed. They've proffered to develop the property in conformance. This is standard language staff's supportive of. The applicant agreed to install the landscape street buffer C per the county's design standard manual requirement. This street buffer will be installed within 30 days of the certificate of occupancy. They plan to do interior renovations to the building, and that'll be the trigger. Upon 30 days of the CO for the building, they'll install the street buffer along the frontage. Staff is supportive of this language. This street buffer will go a long way to help enhance that streetscape along Courthouse Road in this area. The applicant has agreed to eliminate that second access point, American Legion Drive, closest to Courthouse Road, and additionally, improve the access on Courthouse Road to meet the low-volume commercial entrance standards for VDOT. As I mentioned, this addressed two concerns for both VDOT and the county's traffic engineer with respect to design and safety and access management. The applicant agrees upon a change of use, which results in an increased number of vehicle trips, the site shall be improved to include a paved parking lot, and also that the entrance on Courthouse Road will be further improved as necessary for this more intense user. So as I noted, this was the one element that staff had recommended the parking lot be paved. The applicant put forth that upon a more intense traffic, more intense traffic user, that it will be paved at that time. Staff thinks that's, staff believes that to be a worthy compromise. The only note that we will make is that the language as proposed, it just, it doesn't give you a guarantee of when this site will come completely into compliance with the code requirements. And lastly, the applicant has agreed that all signage shall be monument-style. Staff's supportive of this language. Again, this will go towards assisting and enhancing that streetscape along Courthouse Staff identified key findings in favor and against. The proposal is an adaptive reuse of a currently vacant building in a commercial corridor. This proposal will increase tax revenue and is not expected to have any negative impacts on the adjoining properties. The Courthouse Road streetscape will be enhanced with the installation of the landscape street buffer, and both VDOT and county manage, county access management concerns will be addressed with the elimination of that access on American Legion and the improvements to the access on Courthouse Road. The findings in favor against have to do about the design elements. The proposal falls short in meeting all of the design goals that are outlined in the mixed-use district in the comprehensive plan. I caveat that statement by saying that while it doesn't do much to advance the county's design standards, it doesn't do anything to degrade it either. With the parking, with the paved parking area proffer language as proposed, there's no guaranteed timeline. Again, staff still thinks that's still a worthy compromise. Again, staff recommends approval of this proposal. The low-intensity use that's being proposed is similar in character to the former Department of Forestry use, and with the street enhancements, the transportation improvements, all of those outweigh the one negative of not having that parking lot paved up front. And that concludes my presentation. The applicants are here. They don't have anything to say at this time. They're happy to answer any questions, though.
Can you go back to the site plan, Kim? That is the existing site plan, or is that the proposed?
It's basically still an existing conditions plan, except this doesn't show the currently existing second access on American Legion. It's currently right here. It'll be closed, and then this shows the street buffer that will be installed along the frontage.
Driveway that wraps around to the back.
But they still have, right, the second access on American Legion, and then, right, then the gravel parking goes around to the side.
Does the applicant plan on any outside material or equipment storage? Or maybe that's a question for the applicant when he comes up. And was there any discussion on deliveries or things like that, vehicles?
They do have deliveries. They said typically between two to three times a week. These are just truck deliveries. It's not tractor-trailers or any large trucks that are going to be entering the site. And I do know that the employee vehicles aren't going to be stored on the site. Again, the employees do take those home in the evenings.
And the vehicle delivery trust can maneuver the driveways and back in and out safely and all that?
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why are we closing the American Legion, one of the American Legion driveways?
It addresses, for VDOT's perspective, it was too close to this intersection with American Legion at Courthouse Road. So it was, it was closing it from a, from a entrance spacing requirement, to address an entrance spacing requirement.
The other question is, who's going to monitor the parking lot getting it paved?
So with, anytime a new use goes into, onto a site, they have to get a use permit with the zoning department. So at that time, when a use application is submitted, zoning reviews it, they'll pull the proffers and see that timing trigger that it will need to be evaluated.
So, I mean, I'm a little confused. If he's going to put the driveway in at a later date, how are we going to monitor that he's going to do that?
Well, he's not. As long as he's using the property with, as the HVAC business that is only generating 11 trips per day, then it'll remain gravel. If he sells it or moves his business and leases it to another business, or there's another owner that has a business operation that generates more than 11 trips per day, then that new business, that new owner, they would have to get the use permit from zoning, and then during zoning's review, they would catch that that additional traffics could trigger the upgrade to the parking lot.
Thank you. Oh, wait. I have a question for the applicant.
If there are no other questions for Kim, if...
I have one.
Okay.
I'm concerned about the landscaping up front, and the reason that is not the best site visibility that we have. And when kids are practicing ball, and then you have the high school across the road, our site visibility is very, very important there, and I would hate to see landscaping that would block visibility. It has to be low and not to come out too far, so that you can see around. When you come around, you've got a curve in both ways, and it's not good. And I have to go there on Monday night, and I'm a little older and can't see too good anyway. No. But now, that can really be a safety issue there, so I would like to see that address, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Mr. Smith? Oh, we're waiting for the applicant. If you just want to step up here.
With, with your employees, I'm just concerned with the proximity to the school right across the street with all the kids, and then with all the kids going back to the American Legion to the fields back. Do you do any type of background check on your employees?
Yeah, we do background checks, drug checks, that kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
And my one question about the material storage. Are you planning any outside material storage?
No, no. All interior storage, maybe if, if it's acceptable, a dumpster outside, but in the rear of the building, and it would be fenced in where you couldn't see it.
Good. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I had one question. According to the proffers, you'll be installing the, in the buffer area 30 days after your OP. What's your anticipated time schedule right now?
I would like to, you know, after acceptance, I would like to get that in as soon as possible.
You're willing to go?
Yeah.
Reason I was asked is two reasons. One was the kind of, somewhat stabbed the follow-up on Mrs. Carr's comment about that we have no site distance problems there with the type of, and I imagine we can provide him with the type of materials that would be, and in the setback, that would be good there. And then, secondly, if it's sooner now, you're okay, but if you were going to tell me it'd be 60 days, you're in dead summer, you're probably going to lose everything you have there unless you water it. That's, that is my only concern.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Do we have anybody that, no? Very well, unless there's, nobody speak publicly on this, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Make a motion, yes, sir. Do you have a second? Absolutely. Call the motion. Anemus, thank you very much. Good luck. Excellent use of the property. Thank you. Next is our work session. Solar ordinance.
Yes, a new topic for the Planning Commission to consider. I don't have a presentation or anything this evening. I really just wanted to bring this to your attention, get it on your radar, and get some early feedback from you as we start to think about how we might alter the county's ordinance to accommodate solar. And in particular, we're talking about utility-scale solar. These are the solar farms that, we're not talking about solar that might be installed on an individual property or on a rooftop. So we've had two companies approach the county in the last month related to large-scale solar, and one of them, I'll just give you the example, we're talking thousands of acres, major land consumptive use, and that is absolutely forefront, one of the concerns that we've seen as we've been investigating how other jurisdictions in Virginia are treating solar. Some of the big questions are, well, why do we want this? It's going to take up a lot of land. For example, in Akimak County, they have very valuable farmland, very fertile soils, and they started to question, do we really want to give up that farmland, productive farmland for the solar farms? So very consumptive land use. What, what we found is that farm property or timbered property is often ideal because it's pretty much a ready-to-go site at that point. They're not having to go into clear land. Farmland, you know, tends to be fairly flat. They can accommodate, you know, they're, they don't have to move a lot of earth in order to put in the facilities. So what we envision, or what we think is going to happen, is that companies are going to be looking to our agricultural areas more so than our presently-zoned industrial areas. And that is currently where our ordinance would allow for a solar farm, and that would be an industrial, too, with a special use, because right now, the only place it really fits is the same as an electrical generation plant. That, that's the definition it essentially fits under. And it's really, it's different. So that's why most jurisdictions actually create a different definition for large-scale or utility-scale solar and, and treat it differently than a power plant. So that's one of the considerations. I included in your packet a model ordinance that was developed at the state level. In there, they actually suggest that in agricultural, these should be permitted uses, or they could be permitted uses. I don't see a lot of jurisdictions going down that road, though. The most of them, what we've researched, have a special use provision, or they're making it a rezoning. One concern that we have with, from a planning perspective, with it being a industrial type of zoning, is if these are going to be located in agricultural areas, you'd be rezoning to a heavy industrial use in an area that's very rural and agricultural, that industry may be there for 20, 30 years, and then it's decommissioned, and you've got an industrial parcel out there, or you've got perhaps thousands of acres of industrial out there. So, so that just creates an issue for the future, whereas if it remains agricultural and is allowed with a special use permit, it could be removed from that land, and that land then could be planted with trees again and revert to being a forestry parcel, perhaps. So that, that's one of the benefits that I see to allowing with a special use. So the county does still have the review. We still get the input from the citizens and seek to place these at appropriate locations. Another concern, if these are in rural areas, we've got two-lane rural roads, and these very large facilities will have hundreds of people working on them to build them in the early stages, so you definitely will have an increase in, in trucks and just people in general traversing those roads going to that site. So I think that the special use process in that regard will be very beneficial over a permitted-by-right use.
Is there any information or data on the stress of the, on the road network in terms of its, you know, its strength, how they hold up?
Well, the, for, yes. I'm not sure. I'd probably have, the VDOT may have some data on that, just in terms of their maintenance and how they know when they need to maintain the roads.
Yeah, I would be interested to see how, if there is any data, because that'd be one of my concerns, is as you mentioned, they're rural roads. They are, you know, not the, in some cases, the best-maintained roads, but they're rural and probably substandard when it comes to these heavy loads. And I'd be interested to see if there's any data on that or information that you could provide. Yes, sir?
I agree with you, Wanda. So staff, I think you're, I won't speak for, Berkeley and Livingston are obviously the two most farmland, probably Livingston more than Berkeley, but I have a lot of reservations about just allowing that the way we set right now, so for no other reason than to move forward trying to create an ordinance where it requires a lease of special use, number one, but I think we need to scrutinize it very, very carefully and really look at the farm, the farmland that's available, that would be available, because it's fraught with a multitude of issues. Transportation would be just one of many. Also, just the whole idea, I've got Lake Anna Parkway and 208 going toward Lake Anna, and I just can't imagine what, what that could look like. And so that, I think we need to posture ourselves very wisely, so that when one of these come before the county, that, that we can be very careful about any type of allowance of anything like that. So I agree, we need to at least start the process.
What would be the timeline for, for an ordinance development?
It'd probably take us probably at least 60 days to create an ordinance. We've been researching this. We have a lot of good information at this point, so to write the ordinance and to get it through the county attorney's office for review to ensure that we're complying with state code, because the state code actually has a number of provisions in there of requirements that we need to have in our ordinance, you know, if we have one. And one of those would be a requirement for decommissioning plan. That would be very important to consider if any of these are to be approved, well, what does happen in 20, 30 years to all that infrastructure, and we want to ensure that it's not simply abandoned. So we're probably looking at least 60 days to bring back a draft ordinance for review.
Right. Is that something that we can get moving along?
Yes.
Are we in a position to do that?
Yes. If the Planning Commission feels that this is the appropriate approach at this point to investigate special use in agricultural and perhaps rural zoning. At this point, no, I don't need a motion. I just want to be sure that we're sort of going in the right direction as we start to work on this.
We would be very wise to get out ahead of this, and I would, I would support it. So...
Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I'm not dumb on everything, but I sure am dumb on this. Tell me the positive of it, Wanda?
Well, that's, that's one of the items that's actually been of discussion, and a lot of different jurisdictions are trying to nail it down right now. Well, what, what is the benefit of this very land consumptive use? And there are a lot of tax breaks for utility-scale solar, but there, the county would be able to tax 20% of the value of the facility, the, on real estate tax only, as I, and I'm not 100% on this. We've been researching, researching this, so I could be wrong, but this is, this is what I understand at this point. Eight, 20% of the assessed value of the, on the real estate, the county can impose real estate taxes on that. No equipment, personal property, that sort of thing is not able to be taxed. So it's simply real estate. Now, the other component to this is that in rural areas, this land is most likely going to be under land use, so there will be the difference between the land use taxation and the non-land use taxation, and then the rollback taxes, a five-years' worth of rollback when you change the use on a property. So there is that as well. So there, there are financial benefits to the county.
What is it benefit to me? I'm a resident. I'm a citizen.
As a resident, the, well, you know, and any revenue that comes in that is non-residential-based, you know, helps the county as a whole. The, the projects, the solar projects, I'm probably not really prepared to speak to this question this evening, but there, there are benefits to the electrical network. Now, I can't explain any of those. I haven't been researching that aspect of this. I've been looking more at the land use and trying to figure out the financial components of this. So I really probably can't speak too well to your question this evening in terms of what all the benefits are to, to the jurisdiction.
Because all of those electrical poles and wires and everything, we don't get tax-based, we don't get taxes from them.
Right.
They can charge us plenty and go up when they want to on the electric. So that's the reason I ask the question. What benefit is it?
There could be, there, there's benefits in terms of another power source feeding into our electricity system, perhaps lowering rates. There are benefits, big companies like Amazon, they will often buy a lot of their power from these types of projects. So having one in our county, could that attract some big user that wanted to be closer, perhaps? So there are a lot of benefits out there, but I don't have really good tangible description of them for you this evening.
Well, when you give us descriptions and whatever, put it on two pages and not a whole book, because I'll never read it and won't know what I'm reading. Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, let's go ahead and get the process started. It's very well advised to get out in front of this, so I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Wanda, as part of this, do we have to look at the distribution, do we getting it out to the customers for consumption? Or does that fall on another part of, so in other words, once you have these large facilities, they've got to get this out into the grid already, and so they're going to be serving a lot of lands to probably get into, you know, get to an access point, whatever, to a, to a supply line. Is that part of this, or is that fall, will that fall on some other?
Well, that, the location that they will choose to propose will be at a location where they can easily access the grid. So they, the applicants will have worked with REC or with Dominion already to determine whether the substation where they're proposing to key into essentially with this power can handle it, what upgrades are needed, and they'll want to be right next to it, or, you know, very close to it. So I don't believe that it involves a lot of extra wiring to connect. So I don't believe that it involves a lot of extra wiring to connect. They're going to try to be as close as possible.
And going back to Ms. Carter's, you know, statement, now that I'm thinking about that, if they're plugged into REC and Dominion, and those are the only providers that are out there, this isn't a third option, they're going to get the price break. And then whether they want to charge the consumers or not, that break or not, it's up to them, right? At that point, if it was another option that's different, hey, I'd like to switch over to here. And I know that's, at a state level, REC has this, Dominion has this area, and that's broken up that way. But I would be kind of curious to see what the benefit would be as opposed to just getting a cheaper source of electricity for them, if that would actually translate to us in other localities where that may be the case, where they have solar farms up and operating right now.
If they sell it to this locality, I mean, they could sell it anywhere. Yes, Mr. Barnes? They would have significant environmental issues to overcome anyway, you know, cultural resources and historical preservation and all this other stuff. Yep, okay. Any other questions or comments? Very good. Anything else, Wanda? Very good. Any other new business? Any other public comments? I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A call to vote, please. Thank you very much.